Ready to go?
I think we're gonna get started, so we have two committees present today. I represent the Project Review Committee, so I will, I have a court, so I'd like to call to order the Project Review Committee.
And I represent the Regional Planning Committee, and I'm calling to order that committee we have a court. So, oh, yeah, let's do introductions. Yep, and we'll do the intro. Alright. So I'm Laurie Lee Duvex, the Northfield Commissioner and Chair of the Regional Planning Committee.
Janice Shatney, Representative Commissioner for Berry City, Chair of the Project Review Committee.
I'm Bob Worthing, I'm from Brooklyn.
I'm Lieutenant Daniel from Orange, and I'm on the Regional Planning Commission, but I'm not one of the committees here, I'm just a colleague.
I'm Bob Worthing, Executive Director of the Regional Planning Commission.
Peter Kearney, Representative from Washington.
Oh, John Bree Man. I'm the Cal's representative on the Central Mount Regional Planning Commission.
I'm Derek Torrey from Moretown, and I'm on the Regional Planning Committee.
Claire Rock, I'm a staff member of CDRPC.
Jonathan DeLebriere, Staff Member, CDRPC.
Rob Worthing, Principal GIA from Green Mountain Power.
Steve Fitzhugh, Northfield Electric Department.
Bill Powell, Washington, New York.
Well, thank you, everybody, and welcome visitors. I will ask if there are any adjustments to the agenda that anyone has at this time? Okay, hearing none? Any public comments from people, for anyone who's here not on the agenda? No? Okay. I guess we'll jump on into the presentations.
Yeah, so we have, I guess about an hour and a half, you know, an hour fifteen minutes total, so we're gonna try to keep each speaker to fifteen minutes. I don't know if you wanna do questions after each speaker for a few minutes, or wait till the end and do all the questions?
What are the presenters' preferences at this point?
Whatever is, whatever works for you. We're here for you, whatever works for you.
Okay, so if there's interaction, feel free to raise your hand.
Mm-hmm.
And ask a question, okay?
So first up is Mr. Worthing for Green Mountain Power.
Okay, I just, should I forward that PowerPoint to someone here?
Uh...
Or can we connect to that?
Yes, let's see, if there's one, yeah, do you mind? You could, do you wanna jump up there and open it up? There's also one. Yes. I believe that's the one that I got on there. So this is Washington Electric, it's Green Mountain, what, Green Mountain Power?
It wouldn't be have something, but I mean...
Yeah, oh, well, I have a, I have a zip drive here, if you wanna stick it on there, then we can put it up there.
Oh, I can do that, sure, yep, yep.
And the, and the remote clicker doesn't work, so do we want Jonathan just to get a chair?
Sounds great.
Yeah, great. Rather than try squat. Is there any water over people's roads at this time? Do you know how other, our little towns are faring? Near the rivers?
Yeah, south of the country.
I saw that on the Channel Three news, a little pop-up queue, so...
Was that Rutland City, their intake for their reservoir, they have a video clip right there that's pretty, it was like nine, nine fifty this morning, it was rushing pretty good.
Really?
Yeah.
Hmm. And it hasn't let up out there either?
No.
Is there, is there a potential flood?
It's flood warnings for, comes out, yeah.
Especially southern Vermont.
Right, you guys, all, all yourself.
Did you smell that?
Yes.
I have to defer to Washington Electric as I work through some local issues and...
Okay.
So, thanks.
So Jonathan, if you could just fire it up, I'll start it.
Yeah, I did send an email to the group about detachments, so I don't know if that works.
Do we wanna go with Washington Electric?
I, I will, wait for Jonathan to queue it up.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Awesome.
Appreciate it. Thank you, folks, for being here today. I can also see that about half the audience is a WAC member, so I'm very sensitive to that and grateful for it. So Bill Powell, not having a real clear idea of what siting means to this audience, I made some assumptions. I've come prepared with some slides about our demographics and our experience so far with net metering and other distributed generation. I'm also hopeful with some, also some information that doesn't relate to WAC so much as perhaps what your staff and what your member towns may be doing through Act 174. So I, I don't claim any subject matter expertise, I'm simply pointing out there's a couple relevant slides, I think, that talk to the planning construct that is being created and being promoted by Act 174. And at the end of the slide deck, there'll be, I think, some very useful recent information from the Department of Public Service relating to what we, Green Mountain, Northfield, WAC, and other distribution utilities are seeing as, I'll call it, the unintended consequences of distributed generation. So on that note, thank you. A little bit about our COOP, eighty years old this year, forty-one towns, eleven thousand households, ninety-eight percent residential. We have no commercial and industrial load per se. Our largest account is hardwood union. So just to frame this, we're all res. As a consequence, and more, I think, perhaps because of the lay of the land in these forty-one towns across four counties, there are some good siting opportunities if you're in the business of selling renewable energy, especially for PV photovoltaics. Go ahead. So a snapshot with some numbers. This gives you last year, some, two years ago, seventeen, kind of where we were then. And the reason I think this is relevant is because the slide that follows will tell you what happened in one year, and it's, it's pretty significant. So net metering installs as of the end of seventeen, we're at, there's the next to the bottom row, systems connected and total net metering installed and pending through the end of seventeen, two thousand four hundred and seventy-six kilowatt, so twenty, two point five megawatts. And then you'll see above in the corner on the side and the right, our peak sixteen point nine. So call it seventeen megawatts peak, two and a half megawatts installed capacity. And the ratio then is about fifteen percent of our total peak is nameplate rating from DG, distributed generation of the net metering frame. Rob may speak more about bigger projects, but what we see, very little of, are big, big projects, such as you would see, if you go on exit five on eighty-nine, right next to the interstate is a two point two megawatt. Those are called standard offer projects, those are essentially commercial enterprises that have been into the market over a twenty or twenty-five year period with a guaranteed rate. So those aren't net metering at all, but those are part of the landscape that we, as a utility, have to host. We don't take power from it, we have to host them. So there's other consequences. But the takeaway here is fifteen percent of our nameplate rating was in DG at the end of seventeen. Go ahead, Jonathan. So in one year, actually, go ahead and jump ahead, because this is just a repeat of seventeen, so here's eighteen.
If I had a question?
So go ahead, turn.
Just really quickly, when you say you don't take power, but you host them?
Right.
What do you mean by that?
WAC has a distinction between a hundred percent renewable, and we've been a hundred percent renewable for ten years, twelve years. And under state statute, if the utility is determined to be a hundred percent renewable, you don't have to take power from these standard offer projects. And what happens then is, all the other utilities that aren't at a hundred percent have to take their prorated share of the output from those facilities. So it's a little bit of a, a little gold star for having made a hundred percent renewables, but the downside is, we have to allow the power to wheel across our facilities and we don't get paid for that. So it's a little bit of a noise, but that's not for this conversation. This is simply to give you up-to-date data that says at the end of last month, we were at three point five-ish megawatts on that seventeen megawatt price. So we grew from fifteen to twenty percent in one year. And that's huge. I just wanna say frankly, it's huge. And these are not my words, this is the words from the General Manager reporting to her board and, and in a report that we gave to the department, simply to say that net metering for a not-for-profit cooperative costs us money, because every kilowatt hour that's created, whether it's used on site, it's used on site, it displaces a kilowatt hour that would've been sold. If it's banked and applied to the member's bill, cash value is approximately nineteen cents. So it's nineteen cents of value we have to come up with to justify that member's credit. Costs us money. That won't change until the law changes, and I'm not holding my breath. Go ahead. A little timeline and bar graph of the state of Vermont, nameplate capacity, how the process and the, you know, explosion has occurred over the last five years. Essentially, if you wanna think of, like, where the, the real lift came, it was in 2014. The law was changed, it's been changed since nineteen ninety-eight about seven times, by my calculation. And every time the deal has been modified, and frankly, the current deal is attempt to make it standard across the state of Vermont, but, and I don't have any explanation for why the seventeen numbers, I did put in the eighteen numbers, the seventeen numbers are down, but I can tell you, there's a great flurry of activity, and even in eighteen, the law was changed mid-year, like July, and we saw this huge, like, gold line, or whatever, the reference is Goldfield Rush, as people try to get in under the former deal, because the, the current deal is a little bit less sweet. So it's, it's really quite a phenomenon in terms of the explosion in investment and this kind of work. Kind of an I chart, source here is ISO New England, which is the regional enterprise that all the distribution and transmission companies kind of relate to. This is the, the six-state enterprise that manages the grid, the big grid. And the takeaway here is in the third column, so these are Vermont projects that are pending, not done, but you can just see the, the megawatts, MW, is listed in the third column, and you can see there's two thousand-ish or eighteen hundred-ish MW. Vermont peaks around eleven hundred megawatts. So the nameplate rating of the project system queue in this list is greater than the nameplate rating of the entire state. Go ahead. Not to get too far away from Central Vermont, but because the next series of slides, I think, my attempt here is to show you kind of the big picture, and then, as I said earlier, to tie you to a DPS report that was filed with legislature last week. The, the red line represents what's called Sheffield Highgate Export Interface, abbreviated CIA. And CIA is this dynamic grid thing that has to do with the DG, the distribution, distributed generation of the assets that are deployed here, and how they can export their power compared to what the native load in that encircled area is. So the big picture is, there's less load than there is generation. And that is a consequence of, when ISO says, and, and ISO has fingers on the buttons to make things change if they want it, but they have basically an edict that says, if we tell you to shut off one of those plants, you have to shut off, it's called a, do not exceed limit, curtailment. And this is now something that's in the market, it's a relatively recent phenomenon. Rob's cohort, colleague at, at Green Mountain Power, Doug Smith, can, can tell you much more than I, but my take here is, one of the unintended consequences of distributed generation is that it goes to the locations where the site is convenient to deploy, the grid is available. But in terms of what the grid can do, the grid was designed to be kind of a hub and spoke and not to be bidirectional, but that's what's happening now, is, is flows come from Canada into Vermont, Highgate in particular, and they try to travel through Vermont heading south to the load pockets in the southern part of the region. And when you have this imbalance of load to generation in that zone, the ISO puts his hand on the, on the button and says, no, stop, we gotta let you guys stop producing, because we can't export it safely. They have certain rules, I don't wanna get into it. The point to take away here is, this is a, this is like the current condition of the CIA problem, and the distribution utilities and the PUC are attempting to come up with the, the right combination of financial fixes, equipment and policy, and equipment that is different, perhaps, configured than where it is now, to solve this problem. It's, it's a very big project, and now I'm gonna ask Jonathan to page away here and show you kind of the next steps of it.
But Bill, before you look too much further, isn't, didn't ISO New England impose a, an incentive, disincentive, carrot stick approach, whereas they don't turn a switch off, enforce ramp down or curtailment, but they disincent production, and as a result, utilities and, like, VEC and Washington Electric are, and maybe Green Mountain to some extent, are being penalized
I would say, I can't speak for, for GMP, what I will say is, the negative incentive is that now the owners, developers, can take a negative price, in other words, they'll pay to let their thing go, to let their project run. And it's just a kind of back, backwards way, do you know what I mean, of, of running an enterprise. And I don't wanna get too much in the weeds, I can handle questions later, but I just wanna flash through the slides, I'm under a little bit of time constraint, given what I heard earlier. I wanna kind of give you some Vermont-centric information about what we've gotten into. This is a Velco source from last year, April twenty-second and, twenty-seventh? Is it the same thing? No, is it? No, I'm comparing two, six years apart, rather, twelve to eighteen, sorry. So what you see in the red is from six years ago, in a second quarter, a month, statewide, and you can see over a day, it maxed out about six fifty megawatts, and that's the shape of Vermont's curve six years ago, seven years ago. What happened last year? Well, in the same timeframe, in the same period of the year, the gap is almost three hundred kilowatts lower. What's causing that is DG. It's the big stuff and the little stuff and everything running to push down the load. Go ahead, next picture.
What's DG?
Distributed generation, anything, net metering or standard offer, anything that's, whether it's utility-owned or member-owned, it's just producing juice locally, as opposed to contracts that we have already. So the gap, this attempts to show, that was a historic, kind of compared six years apart. This is more within the same month, and I can't read it from here, but I'm gonna say they're about four days apart, and the top blue line is a cloudy day, and the red lower line is a sunny day, so, so what it shows is how, how much different the profile of load appears with the variability of the generation caused by weather. How it's available, except when it's not, and that creates tension on the system. Go ahead. And here are kind of more examples of the same thing all the time. Go ahead. Okay, so the takeaway, remember how I showed you the CIA outline originally? And what this attempts, this is a Velco source, Steve Fitzhugh and I both serve on the Operating Committee at Velco, this is not news to them, they've been dealing with this, but as the Velco, the Velco perspective is, they are the, the big pipe, and they are the transmission provider, they don't dictate where the projects go, that's much more a PUC and statutory thing, and what the distribution utilities can or can't do, can't handle. But the effect of this is, the more you solve the problem, or rather, the more you add to the problem at the top, the further down constraint problem grows. So what this leads to, next slide. Okay, sorry, sorry, there's a second slide I want, I'll just get to in a moment. This is the slide that I think, for your staff and your experience, this is the, the Regional Planning Commission's, our ID here, and what this purports to do is to frame why the Regional Planning Commission's, you know, look at, what the potential for hosting more, more megawatts is. I would just say, this is fairly abstract, but there are better places to put PV, to put DG, Joe. That's the takeaway there.
Can I just ask?
Sure.
When you say better places, are you talking about all of Vermont, or just here?
That frame is to say, the further south you go, the less constraint on the system will be created. The further north you go, the opposite happens, the worse you make the problem. So this is, again, ripped right out of Velco's, Velco plan, and it speaks for itself. They don't see a need to upgrade the wires so much. Some sub-transmission issues to be valued by the DUs, that's a mouthful, but that's, that's really where it's happening, is at our level, at the distribution level. System could handle a hundred, a thousand megawatts without a drastic change, but you couldn't just do it from a get-go. There has to be some balancing and storage, the magic word is part of that potential solution, but there are other ways to solve the problem. And I don't wanna get deep into it, I wanna get to the next couple of slides and turn my time over to Rob and, and Steve, go ahead. All right, so this is, I think, a very useful recent report. The legislature told the department, identify what is, what are the issues currently in Vermont, and it has to do basically with some of the stuff I've just shown you. I wanna give you the source and commend this to you, because although it's not a solution, I think this is a, a very coherent explanation of what are the moving parts that need to be addressed. Next slide. This is the part of the statute, it's the Rule 5500, which is the governing statute for big projects. Net metering is under Rule 5500, bigger generations under 5500. It happens that the rule that I'm hoping to share with you is this grouping of facilities, because the statute enables projects to be gathered together if they can be deployed in a way that causes less adverse effect, and that has value at the PUC in terms of getting a certificate of public good. So I don't know that there's something that will solve the problem, but grouping of facilities might be, and, and what we're done in a, in a location where there's no disruption or less disruption than otherwise, that would, again, I think, be favorably seen by the, by the PUC. So I just wanted to leave it with a language that kind of binds Act 144 to Rule 5.500. I think that's the last one. That's it, so thank you for your time, questions if you got them.
Any questions?
Makes a lot of difference. Anybody got questions? Questions for Bill?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I was curious, you know, when you said that the further south you go in Vermont for locating these solar projects, you'll, the less constraints, so do you envision that, that, that solar developers are shifting to looking south to be developing more of this? Or is there a reason why people, these solar developers, would still look to develop that in our region?
It's a fair question, Claire, let me try to sort it through. I think the market dictates now, and, and in terms of these standard offer projects, we're done with the Dutch auction, so you bid in, lowest bid wins, that's how you get your ticket to do the project. And then there's all the other stuff, which is, now you got a ticket, now you gotta get a certificate of public good and do a system impact study. And I can't speak for the other utilities here, but I can tell you that we don't have a lot of constrained zones in our forty-one towns, meaning our distribution system has some headroom, but we are reaching places on specific circuits. You're on it.
I'm throwing the whole thing out. I'm sorry.
No, I, I'm gonna use our specific case, because it's interesting how, you know, the vagaries of the law, I'll get to your, to try to answer your question, but we, we have, each substation has a certain rating, electrical rating, and one, on one substation, it serves Williamstown, and it's called Jackson Currents on Baptist Road, and it serves about twenty-two hundred households. The amount of net metering on that is about two hundred kilowatts, point two megawatts. We have two standard offer projects that total over, well, like, three point five megawatts. So the rating on this, on these two standard offer projects is bigger than the rating on the substation. When that sun is cranking, that flow is backwards onto his grid, onto his transmission cars. That's a problem, that they are holding us accountable for. Transmission ground fault over voltage. Anyway, so, what I, what I'd say to answer your question, though, is, will there be a geographic preference for a future DG? I hope so, because that's what we need. We can't see the state as kind of a uniform zone for everything. We have to take what we have, which is, you know, mountains and valleys, and certain arteries where the power and the roads run, and just the nature of the, where our population centers are, where our load centers are, and then there's everything else. And, you know, I'm, I'm sensitive to, well, open territory, because that's what we have a lot of. WAC is attractive, and other utilities are attractive for just that reason. I can't tell you how many times developers come knocking on our door, and they say, we'd like to put a project on your property somewhere, you know, we don't have property, but on our zone, and 'cause we're a hundred percent renewable already, we just go, thank you, talk to Rob, you don't need it, we're good. But not everybody's that way, and I think this report that I cited to a couple minutes ago, and where it will end up, the legislature takes notice of it, because they asked for it, and then they got it, so they gotta take notice. But I'm also quite hopeful that with the CIA resolution that I kind of referred to obliquely a little while ago, that that will be the impetus to create a different way to plan and price what we're doing. In other words, storage, this is the big deal, because if you can't ship it, but it has value, you should store it, and keep it in your pocket until it's got value and you don't cause these imbalances in the grid. So storage, what I think of is, is a timing value, so it's not per se, a battery doesn't give me value, but it enables me to put it into my control and dispatch it when I have value to do it. Energy efficiency, Vermont spends fifty million bucks a year on energy efficiency through Efficiency Vermont. Everything that they do, every measure that they put into your household, when you go to the store and you buy a bulb or whatever, that has some value in terms of energy savings, but it's kind of one number statewide, probably not the right construct. Probably should be, where it has more value, should, if the number bigger, it has less value than therefore. So I think there's planning opportunities in the, in the report, and, and I just, again, commend the report to see what the moving parts are, and I think the legislature will have some homework to do, and I think the Regional Planning Commissions and what you do with your member towns, there'd be opportunity to, to enhance, you know, not only siting considerations, because I think that's probably, you know, maybe taco mine, but value proposition, make it worth the while for both the community of the host and the state, because right now it's the Wild West. That's what it feels like.
It does.
Did I answer your question?
Any other questions for Bill, while we move on?
I just had a thought. So is economic development also a part of the picture for the North East Kingdom? Like locating industries that have a lot of load used?
I'd let Jamie speak for that directly. I, I mean, I'm, I think the kingdom is, is kind of, they're very suspect of new DG. Right? That's the, that's a sentiment I hear from my colleagues up in the kingdom. But I think you make a good point. If you could add more business and more load, that can offsets on it.
If they could offer lower electricity prices, would it draw in industry?
I would say you should speak to your friends that serve that zone and Vermont Electric Co-op and GMP has a part of the footprint up there. But it's mostly VBC is, and a couple of munis like Hardwick and Morrisville, Johnson. They each have their own little enterprise. And Steve, as a municipal entity, speaks to that family of folks up there. I think there's opportunity here. But I don't think today, the encouragement would be get, I'll give you a lower rate if you put your business in here. I think there has to be more to it. And I think doing that complements the DG opportunity too.
I'll just add just real quick here that in the past, if we've had a large company looking to come in to within any of the territories and that's been the old ACVPS or more recently GMP and Washington Electric, they're usually at the table offering some kind of an incentive rate if it's a large enough entity with enough demand. But what we don't have, which would help both in as we're working with developers that work with solar projects, as well as in businesses, there's no good map that says this is where the infrastructure is and this is what the infrastructure will provide. And part of that is that there are severe federal restrictions on that information being totally public because of protecting the grid system. So from Velco, as an example, they can't tell you where all the best places to hook in a solar system would be, where it's most viable. You can look at a map and figure out where substations are, but you don't know the capacity of the substations and the pieces of stuff. That's always been kind of a piece out of bounds. And we've tried on several, first we've tried several occasions to work on getting some of that and trying to map out so we could point people that were looking to develop distributive generation projects, solar projects in the locations where the infrastructure existed. And as I say, it's hard really to get solid maps that gives that information. It's really out of their hands, they don't.
Cybersecurity requirements. It's called CEII, Confidential Energy Information, something.
Critical.
Critical things.
Critical infrastructure.
When we take information at Velco operating, meaning we have to like sign an NDA that says we're going to develop what we just saw. So, but Jamie's point, I think, is spot on. There are, I mean, GMP has a great map system that color codes no good, maybe okay kind of zones. But my concern with that kind of simplification is it really doesn't solve all the problems because it's a dynamic, you know, loads change 8,760 times a year. Like it's all over the map. And the intermittent nature of DG, especially photovoltaics, is helpful at sometimes and it doesn't do anything when we peak. What WEC, for example, being mostly residential, we peak in the middle of the winter. PV does this much help at 6:00 PM on January, you know, the middle of the afternoon, right? Early in the day. So it has a different benefit to a utility, I'm putting it Rob, whose peak is in August or September at 3:00 or 4:00 PM. The other consequence of PV, if you remember the shape of that, in California it's called a duck curve, Vermont it's called the shamp curve. But it's, it's the, it's the profile of load versus load suppressed by DG. One other consequence in terms of the time of day, used to be, we collectively as a state would peak about 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock on a weekday in August. Especially after three days of high humidity attempts down, down south. Everybody peaks kind of at the same time. With PV, that's now being pushed down and being pushed out. So that now our peak hours are like 8:00 PM, 9:00 PM in those summerish months. So later in the day, as soon as PV goes out, rebound. So we have peaks but happening three and five hours later than they were did 10 years ago.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you very much, Bill. I think we're looking at, yeah, Rob.
All right.
Rob, take it away.
Perfect. Well, I think you'll hear a lot of concerns phrased in a different way from what Bill was talking about. It's especially exciting to hear about, sort of at the end of the slideshow, I started the whole thing of where we're at and where we're at and then where we're going in the future. And one of the things we'll get to is the idea of storage in, in the future. So that's really encouraging to hear Bill talk about storage in the different times of day and whatnot because that really is where we're going in the future. This is just a screenshot of our territories. Most of the state, as you can see there. The next slide. This is the, the ramping up of our net meter projects. And if you go to the next slide, it's the same thing. So on the left-hand side, you have all the solar. And you can see there's sort of some jumps in it. That peak is about 250 megawatts. And our system peak is 700 or 730. So we're running similar ratios as Bill's system there, you know? And I definitely feel his pain, you know? It's, the problem is still the same with high penetrations. Either it's, there's more parts of the system or maybe just a smaller part, but it's still the same, the same issue there. On the right-hand side, what I did is I carved out all the projects that are larger than 150. And you can see a little bit clearer trend there where it's basically that straight line. And I know it's hard to see on the, on the top, but those slices are years and that's 2018. So we just pulled that data right there. And so you can see there's a clear trend. Doesn't look like it's slowing down. And on the next slide there, this is specific for all the solar in the Montpelier District. And I'm defining that as our operational district, which is pretty close to what we're looking at here for our community. Where obviously we show that with Washington Electric as well. Those step changes are bigger projects that, that change the penetration levels.
So this includes solar on the Washington Electric grid? This is some total?
No, it does.
Oh, no, this is your section?
This is our database.
Okay.
And this is the database of the projects that are not in the ISO New England queue. So these are active projects that are installed. And so there are projects that are being reviewed or have been reviewed and are in construction but are not plugged in yet. So they're not active. And there, and those projects is another 100 megawatts that is coming. And then in the ISO queue, there's about another 200 megawatts. So the future, if I could just keep that dotted line going, it just goes right up through that dotted line there. So we'll keep going down through the slideshow here. I want to talk a little bit about the interconnection process. There's a lot to it. But one of the things I want to get through the group is that when you go through the process, it basically goes off into two paths. And those paths are two people in our company. There's Mike and there's Carly. And Carly's in charge of basically the smaller projects and Mike is in charge of some of the larger projects. So it's, it's a, it can be a pretty confusing project, process procedurally or whatnot. But the good news is that we have those single points of contact to help our customers through it. So I know it can be overwhelming at first, so just give us a call and help you through. Keep going to the next slide. So there's some questions on the solar map. And I just took some screenshots of our map that's online right now. And I couldn't fit the whole territory in sort of one square, so I broke it up. And you see some zones in Addison County that are red. And there's some green space. And especially down in Rutherford, it looks like there's some green space. And, and these are distribution lines. So we're looking at the power transformer and some of the subtransmission issues. But this is not really reflecting that CII interface, which Bill had talked about, where the top part of the state is sort of stay away from and go to the southern part of the state. So that's what we're looking at right there. And as we keep penetrating, more of those circuits are kind of keep turning up red as we solve different issues. And.
The red means what?
So the red could be a couple of different things. Basically, it says connecting solar here is going to be a challenge. And some of the things that drive that are transmission issues, like Bill talked about, the substation capacity rating or the voltage level on the distribution meter. So typical distribution meters at GMP are 7,200 volts to the ground and 12.47 like a line. So as the voltage goes down, those amps that you're trying to get back that power will go up. And it makes the interconnections more challenging. So we try to flag those up so people know.
So yeah, the reason you're trying to stay away from the northern part of the state is just because there's massive power generation up there?
I wouldn't say that we're trying to stay away from any part of the state. We're trying to give visibility to people that they're going to have challenges, you know? They may still try to connect on, we've had customers that just try to connect anyway, some, some larger projects on a red part of the map. And that's, okay, that's fine, but we'll see what we need to do to get you on the grid. So, yeah.
So what, do you ever discourage them and, or say, you don't really want to do this project?
No, it's, you know, it does help to have a dialogue upfront and be honest about it. I've had customers with 500 KWs, which is large, connect to 4KV systems. And say, okay, this is what we're doing. Is you sure, do you want to do this? And, and they say, yeah, yep, yep, we understand. Let's go, let's do it. And I say, okay.
So what is the downside? Then is it more expensive to, to put those projects in? Or they're just, they don't care because it's not going to impact them?
Usually it comes down to cost, right? So what happens is that I bring up my distribution software to analyze the problem. And if there's a lot of DG or if it's a lower voltage, I have a lot more problems to solve. And so my solutions cost money. Everything I'm doing, you can say, okay, change out of fuses, that's, you know, that's a little bit of hours there.
For them.
Yeah, that's right. Yes, sorry. So the more issues I have to solve, the dollars go up and up on their end of things. Yeah.
Can I follow?
Yeah.
So a couple of things. I think the point that I would offer to kind of put a label on what Rob is describing is cost causation. If you want it, you caused it, you pay for it. And the other thing is, we don't have a choice. This is statutory.
Yeah.
Thou shalt let the member, customer, do what they want, pay their costs, and accommodate them. And when I said earlier, Wild West, you know, what, what we really see is in Rob's company, there's two people that handle every, those applications. I handle them all. So I get to see the full market. And what I see are, you know, for-profit companies, some well-intentioned, some less so. No names, please. But they're, they're competing. And everybody today is getting, getting two prices, which makes sense. But what they don't know is, for example, I'll give, as storage becomes more prevalent, people are putting in power walls or like equipment. What we're seeing is two things or three things. One is the price point is going down. Power from PV has gone down majorly. When I put my system in, I'm CPG number 50. There's about 11,000 now. So in my day, I paid 10 bucks a watt. Now it's about a dollar a watt. That's not the full system, but that's just the PV itself. So it's probably in the $2 to $3 a watt complete installation for a residential sale. When, when, in that era, this issue wasn't, we didn't, we didn't have any of this because it was so infrequent. And there's plenty of headroom in the, in the system. We're at 11,000 projects totaling 220 megawatts in a system that's about 11,000. So, and where the red zones are statewide, not just GMP's zone, that has costs. Yeah, you can do it, but would you really be better off doing somewhere else? So like I said, I think this DG report will help price and cause the price point and the value proposition to be more reflected geographically. And I think that would be useful. So I think, maybe I understood the question differently. So if generation exceeds load, say in the middle of a sunny day in the summer, by adding all these renewables to our grid, WEC grid, Washington, I'm sorry, the GMP grid, then that excess load, that excess generation needs to be sold on the market, right? And the more regional gets fed into the regional market. And you're paying a certain price as required by the law. But what you're selling it for may be much less, depending on the time of day. And who picks up that difference? Is it the rate payer? I had a slide that talked about how much we lose per kilowatt hour. Okay, but when you say we lose, that means the rate payers absorbing that cost. Because let's put, one of the statutory requirements is the utility must provide for its consumers. Right. So we go to contracts and we verify we've got this much that we need to buy. We buy it. And now along comes DG, which is intermittent, not dependable. But it's there and it's real. And it's big. 20% of my market is from a source that I don't control. But it displaces power that I already bought. So it's really a double win. I already paid for it. And now when it goes on to the grid and it's sold at the local, the middle price, yeah, it's less than what we're, we just paid at the retail value of the metering in Vermont. What can the price spread be? Huge. Like what's huge? Well, 19 cents payment and it's worth two to three cents. Sorry. In order. That's important.
I think the power purchasing agreements are like 10 cents.
Yours may be, I'm framing.
But if you're looking at particularly the older net meter, it's 19 cents.
Compared to what other, where's the two or three cents come from?
Well, think of what.
Sell it back on the grid.
Right, the kind of.
LNP can be down 10, 2 bucks, you know, 2 cents a kilowatt.
This is a framing question. What's it worth? Who's paying? We have contracts, we've paid for them. This doesn't help us. And it costs us money. So it's, it's, there's not one, I mean, I put in the value because WEC filed this report to give its point of view. It's not necessarily the right number because it's a dynamic thing. It changes over time. What the LNP is today was different, you know, from yesterday or three weeks ago. But it's not a money-making proposition, except for the Sun Commons of the world, who are locking in contracts and making money on each project. So I'll stop there.
Okay. All right, so next slide is more solar maps for this area. It's the same map as we had before. I just built it in for the group here. We can go on to the next slide. So I'm going to talk about the bulk system problems in a different way than Bill did. Bill talked about the CII problem up north in Vermont. But this is a California issue that happened. And it kind of illustrates just how deeply the renewables are penetrating. So basically what happened was, there's a little excerpt on the bottom here. But Southern California Edison had this Blue Coat fire. You can Google it online. And so that, that fire caused some of these transmission lines to go through a fault. And it's basically electrical disturbance. And because all the inverters that are distributed through all these homes are basically, they were programmed to the same way, a lot of them tripped off. Actually, 1,200 megawatts tripped off. So that's like a Vermont tripping off a line right there. And so that curve right there is this nice solar curve. And the little dip where it says number one, that's the 1,200 megawatts tripping offline. There's a couple other dips in there too. So there was other fires. And I'll just read the little blur about the bottom because I thought it was really interesting. It says, by the end of the day, the Southern California Edison Transmission System experienced 13 500 KV line faults. And the Los Angeles Department Water, Torre Water and Power System experienced 2, 287 KV faults as a result of the fire. So another slide, if you go and read the reports, they look at different days throughout the year. And there was other events that also caused the DG to simultaneously trip offline. So that's what we're dealing with. It's not just a Vermont issue, it's a nation's issue. So what we're doing as an industry, we've developed a few different standards. And this is not a Vermont standard. These are national standards, so that.
Global.
Yeah, that's right. And then so the UL 1741 supplemental edition 2016 was put out to test these grid support functions. And this was an intermediate step, something that Hawaii and California needed badly. Just last year, the beginning of last year, they finally successfully passed the 1547 version of the interconnection standard from I triple A. And those require the new inverters to have these functions. And currently under valid, it's just going to be valid now as 1547 dot one. And basically, that's the methods or the procedures on how to test. And it's going to basically take the place of the 1741 and streamline the new standards. So with that, we have inverters that are a little bit smarter now. They can help the grid on a bulk system. And ISO New England looked at that. They've looked at what happened in California and what's happening in Hawaii. And they issued a source requirement document for inverters. And we have, that was issued in the spring of last year. And there's a grace period before we, we get to actually require developers to start using these new support functions. And that ended November 2nd. So all new applications are going to be required to comply with this. And there's a link to it right on our website in the interconnection page and I'll let her explain that. So it's a different perspective on how the DG is impacting the bigger system. But. So, um, it's a different perspective on how the DG is impacting the bigger system, um, but this is what's happening now. Um, and then bigger than that, we have the, um, the drivers, right? The global time change report that just came out. Um, go ahead to the next slide. One thing that's kinda jumped out at me was the extreme weather events are gonna be more likely, you know? And, uh, as we know, keep going to the next slide, I'll just go right through these. Here we go, extreme weather right here, right? So everyone's shaking their heads, yes, yep, we love our trees, and they don't like heavy snow loading, and they fall and they break down the wires. So, go to the next slide. Um, this is, uh, the renewable energy standard from, um, the state, uh, Act fifty-six. And we're broken up into three different tiers to try to lower the carbon. Um, and one of the more interesting tiers is this tier-three energy transformation. And basically what that means is, uh, we, if we can find a way to cut carbon, we, we can start partnering with people that are, um, with projects that maybe don't seem like they belong in an electrical utility space, but they help cut carbon. So, uh, well, there's many examples of this. But one of the examples, let's say, if there's a remote, um, quarry operation and they use a diesel generator to crush stone, right? If we can help them connect to the grid and instead of using one hundred percent diesel power, they use our energy profile that cuts carbon, right? And so we're able to use that tier-three program to give money back to that person, pay for the line extension, so no insulation holes in the wires to help cut the carbon. And there's a lot of different flavors for that, as long as we can prove that it actually cuts carbon and, um, then we can offer that to the customer.
Aren't you also relying on nuclear power under tier-three, green mountain powers rely on that as a carbon, uh?
Uh, so tier-three is the transformation, I'm not exactly sure. So, uh, the nuclear power, although it's not renewable, it does count as cutting the carbon?
Right.
So I'm not sure, is it tier-one, yeah?
I'm pretty sure that, oh, tier-one, and that was tier-three.
Yeah, so.
Uh, tier, tier-one is existing, tier-two is new deployable.
Oh, okay.
Distributed DG.
Distributed generation.
Okay.
And then tier-three is fuel switching. So utilities can provide incentives to customers to buy electric vehicles, they can help with water liberalization, they can help with cold weather heat pumps or heat pump hot water heaters. So the objective is, only one-third of our energy use is in electricity now. The other two-thirds really is transportation and heating. So the objective is to move away from fossil fuels in those two areas and deploy more electric resources, which is gonna cause some additional concerns, right, to these, but.
Local load is what you want in the kingdom, though, very local load, right?
Yeah, but the trouble is, we, we don't have the local load in the kingdom.
Right, yeah.
So a little spoiler alert, that circles back again to, uh, how we all use energy at what time of day, right? So our, our vision is, well, we, go to the next slide, it just talks about splitting up the power. Um, so part of the energy transformation is, uh, it's gonna include things that maybe we have a control over at GMP. So a heat pump or a battery, and this is, can we turn on the battery or basically discharge it like a generator? Or do we make it charge, put energy into it and store that energy, right? And if we had electric vehicles, you know, and how to manage all those different loads and generations. And that's what ISO New England does, you know, they're a regional operator, and they just have to keep this constant balance between load and generation. And it gets more difficult for them if the generation is more volatile. So that's why we all, at the lower levels, at the home, our vision is that we're all trying to help balance that out. And, and therefore, if we can do that, help the grid, right? So if we're not gonna keep stacking on generation at noon when it's sunny out, we can store some of that so that when the sun goes down, then we can generate it. That's gonna help the, the bulk system, the distribution system, everything, we can flatten out those profiles.
Is that like, um, grid-integrated water heaters?
Yes, so you believe it or not, that thermal capacity within a home is basically storage, right? So if we can, if the sun is shining, we have a lot of DG out there, we could, you know, heat up the houses. And then when the sun goes away, then the grid is normally challenged, we'll just ride out that heat capacity of your home for a little bit. So that's exactly what we're doing with the heat pump controllers, if you give us, uh, so, so if you give us control of that, we can save some money during those peak system periods. And then when we save that money, we can then justify charging a little bit less for those type of projects, right? That's how the Tesla power wall gets a reduction on what we can offer you for it, so, yeah.
Quickly looking at that, electric vehicles are under residential opportunities, transportation's under commercial and industrial opportunities. I don't see a rush to electrify our public transit and school bus fleet, are you able to?
I think what we're dealing with there, um, is what's available on the market, right? So we don't build the cars or the, the buses. So if Tesla came out with a bus, then let's just do it, let's, let's buy.
So should we link our public transit providers and our school bus fleets to the power companies? And, and say, hey, guys over here, go talk to those guys about tier-three funding?
Absolutely, so the, the piece that's missing from that is, uh, we could provide them power or agree to how they're gonna use the power, but then we actually need the tool, right, the actual electric bus.
So you can't buy the bus, you can't help convert the fleet?
If you can show me where I could buy one, then we, we can work out.
Yeah, they're looking at a bus.
We just bought some, so, okay.
Did you have some? Well, that's, that's exciting, well, let, let's investigate that, then, absolutely, you're right. Because those, those are big power sources right there, and that's exactly the type of thing.
And they're big batteries.
Right.
They're big batteries. Think about it, they're parked at a school.
That's right.
And they, they don't get used till the end of the day.
So if I could add, uh, maybe to direct you where, um, this is happening in Vermont. Burlington Electric Department, um, has in their tier-three program, most of their measures that they're promoting are transportation-based. And buses are part of that. And I would just encourage you to take a look at their website, it's quite useful. And they are working with their local regional transportation group. And there are orders, I think for two, uh, I think the, it's Pantera or something like that, I forget the name, but it's, one of the buses that was touring Vermont last year. Um, there were two, one was from Quebec, Lion, and then this other guy from California. Um, so I would just say, that's where it's happening. Um, the other bucket of money that Regional Planning Commission should be aware of to promote to your member towns are, is the VW settlement money. The first round of those grants was let two months ago, or the RFP was two months ago. They're pending and we should hear the first news, um, within the month, I think. Um, but that, those would be, and I think, you know, Regional Planning Commission and regional transport groups have, I think, a perfect fit. Uh, the model is BED, and the money would be, I would say, either tier-three or grants from, don't expect the state of Vermont to throw money at this, personal opinion. Uh, but the VW money is in their bailiwick, and it is being let out under very, I think, open and municipal conditions. They, they, it's actually quite attractive, so I would say, go there.
And they all know, so they're kind of chuffing, but in, in full disclosure, I'm our region's representative to Green Mountain Transit, which serves the Burlington area as well as Franklin, Grand Isle, Central Vermont, and Lamont County, so we might be showing up on your doors.
I love it, I love it, all right.
Remember.
Bring it.
Translates to load.
Yeah.
Exactly, it translates.
Well, it transfer, you know, and it balancing control and managing the grid, which is absolutely.
Well, and the, and the advantage, again, with transportation, although you can charge vehicles during the day with solar if you're at work, at night, when you plug it in, the utility has to maintain at least a minimum infrastructure to be able to supply the load when the sun's not out. And in the evening, at night, from one o'clock in the morning to five or six o'clock in the morning, the loads are very low. And there's a, a ton of capacity that could be used to charge vehicles.
That's so true.
And for the most part, those vehicles are sitting there.
And they're sitting there.
Or at night, in the early morning.
That's right. Uh, these transportation systems, buses, um, either for public schools or whatnot, they have those fixed routes, the fixed schedules. And so I think that's a great opportunity. We could do fixed scheduling for the charging and the discharging of those, um, those buses, so.
The, the difficulty, I'm not speaking for the bus entity, but just what I've listened to from BED is, the first cost is considerably greater than a diesel. Um, the advantage is lower operating costs. There's a catch-twenty-two, cause you can't prove the operating cost until you buy the bus and, you know, travel it and use it and, and get some data. But prospectively, they have lower operating costs. And as long as it doesn't cause a new peak, so that has to do much more with scheduling and controlling when the load comes on. Because any, you know, the residential flavor is one-twenty volt or two-forty volt. Those, those voltages are, you know, conventional household voltages. When you're talking Tesla, direct current, direct, th- th- these, I saw an article today that the new fast chargers are gonna be up to three hundred and fifty KW. You're not gonna have a lot of those in Vermont. Those can deliver a lot of power in a hurry, but that's gonna cause, you know, some utility a quick hiccup.
Everybody's lights dim.
Yeah, exactly. So be careful what you wish for. The Tesla, and, and anything that's fast charging, has that attraction to convenience and consumer kind of advantage. The flip side is, if you do it all at the same time, we're, we're really gonna get crushed. Um, and it really depends on where the infrastructure is, you can put in a forty or seventy-five kilowatt load in one fell swoop. Those are, don't bring it to WEC, we can't handle that.
So, uh, GMP, uh, as far as the energy, Energy Innovation Center in downtown Rutland, we have a tier-three team, folks doing penciling out these projects to try to prove the carbon offsets to Bill's point, so, uh, don't be intimidated by it, just give us a call, we'll, we'll work on it together. We'll, we'll see if we can't make it happen, so. Go ahead with the next slide there. Um, so we already talked about managing the, the grid at a New England level, and also we'll do the same thing inside our home, right? With the help of GMP to try to manage our own loads, go to the next slide. This is, um, a grid scale, this is in Rutland, actually, the Stafford Storage Project. So we have solar here, and on the left-hand side, we have some batteries. And, and basically the same thing that we just talked about, if it's buses or if it's, uh, the Tesla power wall, we're trying to cut our system peaks so that new, the, the transmission operators don't have to plan for and build out to these, uh, really, uh, larger peaking powers in the middle of the summertime, right? So if we can all cut those times where the sun is really hot, then we don't need to keep building, you know, bigger and bigger transmission facilities, which are really expensive.
And that's a Brownfield site, correct?
It is, actually, that's right, that's right, right on Gleason Ave, yeah, right near the high school, so, next slide. And this is the same thing as the Tesla power wall. We haven't really talked about, um, the resiliency piece yet, but one of our visions is that when we get solar close to the load, it sets the stage that we could either add batteries at the same time, or later on, when the batteries become more affordable, if they're not already affordable. And right now, we can get a Tesla power wall for fifteen dollars a month, if you give us control of it, so we can cut our system peaks. We've had some customers do it with solar, and they're able to, when the storms come through, as we saw from like global warming, you know, they, they're out, out power for a while, they're, they're very happy with, with, um, the battery backup and the last, you know, depending how you manage your home, obviously, it'll last longer or not. And you, when you combine it with solar, then you, it'll just keep charging that battery as long as it can and keep it. So that's, that's really the model we wanna expand on, because.
Fifteen dollars a month?
Fifteen bucks a month.
Bill?
It's cheap.
Yeah, good, Bill, what can they do for us?
Now, when you say, give you control of that power wall.
That's right.
What do you mean by that?
So what I mean is, uh, Tesla has this peaking software that we try to predict the peak, right? Cause it's easy to look back and say, okay, August twenty-eighth of two thousand eighteen, we had a system peak or, or whatnot. But when we're actually in the moment-by-moment, we have to predict these peaks, and so we have some software, we have humans at the same time. Uh, uh, we always had to dispatch our hydro, right? So we're, we're used to doing this as people, but there's gonna be too many assets to control, so we're gonna have to leverage, uh, communications. So basically, the, uh, that software is able to predict the peak, our people agree with that, you know? And then we go ahead and dispatch these units that are basically sitting there on standby for now, waiting for an outage or whatnot. And if this is, oh, GMP has a system peak, it'll just discharge during those hours. So depending how long the event's gonna last for, um, we'll, we'll usually discharge them for three hours or so and, and just try to carve off that little system peak in times. And it's been working, it really has been, so, it's great, great savings. And that's the vision of the future, to get that load and that generation close to each other, little bit of storage, either it's a, you know, battery storage or it could be thermal storage, right? Anything to just kinda turn down the, the system infrastructure at those demanding times.
And the reason that it's important is that there's a terminology, it's economic dispatch, meaning when you hit a system peak, you are throwing everything at, uh, the load, and you've got very, very expensive resources.
Dirty, dirty.
And generally dirty, uh, which means, uh, you're paying a lot. You're, your electric bill, you pay the same amount per hour, per kilowatt hour throughout the whole month. But when utilities buy it, particularly on the market, that price fluctuates sometimes very wildly. It could be two hundred or it could be more than two hundred dollars a megawatt hour, which one is normally down around five dollars a megawatt hour or fifty dollars a megawatt hour, so. So it's, it, there is a, there's a value to, to being able to dispatch those. It should be an, an NED something or something, something. Hey, look, there it is.
Thank you, Rob, that was great.
Oh, great, yeah.
Excellent.
Okay, so, uh, Northfield Electric Department, so we've had a, uh, a co-op and, uh, and a, what's known as an IOU, an investor-owned utility. And so I'll represent a third of the three types of utilities in Vermont, and that's a municipal utility. Now, I apologize, uh, Google Maps wasn't helping us too much on the, uh, left-hand side, if you will allow me, I will come here. So to show you the service territory, Northfield is, originally it was Nor- Village of Northfield Electric Department, and it's now a town of Northfield, because villages and towns merged. But right in the middle is Norwich University, which is, uh, essentially the biggest load. This is, uh, Route twelve A that goes down to Roxbury, this is Route twelve that goes down to Randolph. Uh, and then Route twelve north out of town goes into Berlin, and then this is Cox Brook Road that goes over to, uh, Moore Town and then into Warren. And so essentially, the, this is, this is the boundary, uh, the, the limits of our system. It's really right along Route twelve. And if you look at Route twelve, it also shares the same valley, or the same valley with the Dog River. And so most of our service territory is in a valley. And so when folks say, hey, about putting in solar, we really don't have a place for solar. Uh, if it's on the west-facing side, morning light isn't the best. If it's on a, if it's on west-facing side, it's better. Uh, we just don't frankly have a lot of space to put solar in town. But we have a little bit, one's on a Brownfield site, was just, uh, commissioned about six months ago. It's a five-hundred kilowatt unit. But if you go to the next slide, I'll look at, uh, our feeders, we basically have five feeders in town. And, um, so I, we, whenever we have a new project come online, or, or a developer wants to develop a project, we need to look at, what is the peak load on that feeder, how big is the project? Well, if I look, and we need to consider about fifteen percent of the peak load. So Northfield Electric, our total peak is only about five megawatts. Now, you would sit here and start adding these up, and these, these don't add up to four, forty-nine seventy. Forty-nine seventy is the peak load for the entire system in the year. And these other values represent the peak load on those particular feeders, and they don't, they're not coincident. So that's why the numbers don't add up. But if you look at fifteen percent, uh, there's, those are not big numbers when we start talking about five hundred kilowatt units or a megawatt of, of solar. So they do cause some problems technically with us. So I now show, in this column, they just installed, uh, distributed lot, I use DER, distributed energy resources, the same as distributed generation. Um, in terms of kilowatts, so seventy-three, thirty-nine, five hundred and forty-nine, these are solar. So mostly the seventy-three and thirty-nine are solar net metering projects, well, they're all net metering projects. But this includes that, that five hundred kilowatt solar project, uh, on an old gravel bed. I almost, I thought it was Bill's, but he was saying.
I gave it back to Steve.
He threw it back at me. Now, I have two other listed here, this two hundred is actually a hydro. And the two hundred and fifty here is when Norwich University, as the boiler's going to heat the facility, uh, they can co-generate about two hundred and fifty kilowatts. Now, several years ago, we'd have been burning oil to do that. We've converted, so we have a woodchip plant, so that steam is being generated by woodchips. So we've got about eleven hundred kilowatts of, uh, renewable generation out of about five thousand. So we're about twenty percent in terms of renewable. And we've got proposed, um, a hundred, uh, well, basically, it's anywhere from eleven hundred to sixteen hundred, uh, kilowatts of solar that have been proposed that aren't. of solar that have been proposed that aren't yet online. So next slide. So, um, my interpretation of what you wanted to hear from us is, what's the impact on the customer? And so this is a little bit of the track I'm trying to take. And I want to compare kilowatts to kilowatt hours. Kilowatts is power, and it's kind of an instantaneous value. Kilowatt hours is total energy. Now, the example I use is if, uh, well, I live in Northfield, and obviously, coming up Route sixty-four to get to the highway, I've got to go up a steep hill. Now, whether I ride my bike up the hill, or I take the, my truck up, it's the same amount of energy it's going to take to get my body that height. But my bike is going to go much slower up the hill, because I don't have as much power as my truck does. My truck's going to go faster. So the power allows you to do more work faster. But total energy is the total energy. So now the kilowatts, when we look at a solar farm, it's generating kilowatts that I have to be able to handle on the system instantaneously. But then you have to look at the total energy that's going to be delivered to the utility over the year from that site. Well, I've got six-hundred-and-sixty-one kilowatts of distributed energy resources, primarily solar. This is just solar. But it only relates to three percent, three percent of my load. If I start, even if I, if we say, well, twenty percent, I put a hundred percent of my load in solar, I'm still only at fifteen percent of my, where's my other eighty-five percent of my energy coming from? That, to me, is the problem with solar. And even if I increase by, you know, another eleven-hundred kilowatts, I'm still only at eight percent. So when we look at the renewable energy standard, and what does that mean for my customers? Because as Bill mentioned, whoever causes the cost should pay for it. My, my ratepayers are sitting there, they have to pick up the load, if you will, and the, the cost. So if we flip to the next, oh, by the way, go back. So my annual load, and total amount of energy that Northfield would use is about thirty, uh, thirty million kilowatt hours, or thirty thousand megawatt hours, uh, which is a long, long haul from what we had there. So my, here's an example of a, a net, what is the impact on my customers? A solar net metering project, five-hundred kilowatts, went into the system. And so the annual production, if you calculate approximately how much energy, and, and the way that we typically do this is you take the nameplate rating of kilowatts, you multiply that by eighty-seven sixty, which is the number of days, a number of hours in a year, and then you multiply that by a coefficient of about point one seven, and it's about seventeen percent of the time in the year, seventeen percent of the hours in the year, that the solar farm is going to be generating energy. That's my production. So I can generally buy at about nine cents a kilowatt hour. But when I had, this net metering project came in a month and a half before the deadline. They were just under the wire, and we, we have to take them. It costs my ratepayers between, well, between about seventy-five thousand extra dollars a year. The developer doesn't pay for it, the ratepayers do. Are you, you're a ratepayer? Oh, you have a question? Okay, so.
If you're taking.
Now, well, I will, just a second. So one way that we sort of helped everybody be whole is that we made the deal with the developer that the municipality would buy the energy for the water plant, the sewer plant, and our municipal buildings, so that in the municipality, people are paying, well, the electric ratepayers are paying the money, and everybody in town is getting the benefit. Now, Northfield is interesting in that all three of us at the table here all have customers in Northfield. Northfield Electric has about seventy-five percent of their customers, and then WEC and GMP have the balance of the other twenty-five percent of our customers. And so, uh, GMP is to our west and to our north, and WEC is to our south and east. And so, uh, but my customers, the electric ratepayers, pay this additional money. But fortunately, we're able to get that benefit back to the, to the ratepayers and to the people who count. Question?
Well, my question was, are there also system benefits from this renewable generation that you're not factoring in as you're thinking about costs?
I have not seen a system benefit. There is some energy that's being produced in town. It's at the far end of a feeder, so that can cause us some problems, because, you know, our relays always look at, if we have a fault in the system, where somebody hits a telephone pole and wire comes down in the car, the breaker in the substation should open up, but I got something at the far end that's generating power that's got to operate as well. So it creates some problems.
So can I just maybe, are you asking about some other fungible value of net metering? Like REX, is that the word? Professor?
Art.
REX?
The REX? Those REX, we, the, uh, the developer decided to hold on to. So that's a project.
I think Stowe ended up getting REX with the, um...
Stowe got some from one of their projects, but this company, so, so REX now are fairly inexpensive on the market. So most people are holding on to the REX until the market goes up. There's a lot of solar that's, has been in, and it continues to be developed in Vermont, that we don't have the REX for. And it's my understanding that it doesn't count toward our goal of getting to, you know, ninety percent by twenty-fifty, because those are being sold in Massachusetts and Connecticut.
All new stuff since seventeen, since RES went into effect. We have to retire those REXs, if they're transferred to the utility and not retained by the customer or the developer.
So just, just trying to clear the, because terminology, you, you've got seven-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-four of additional energy costs that is being borne by the ratepayers as a result. What was the benefit you're delivering to the ratepayer? There's a cost.
For this, well, the, what I'm saying is, the way that we offset this cost to the ratepayer is that the, uh, the municipality is the off-taker, so.
But you're still paying a premium for power.
We're paying a premium for power, but in some case, for, for example, people that are on water, sewer, and electric, the utilities in the, you know, the really heart of the, the town, it's money that's gone from one pocket into the other. Because the extra that I'm paying on my electric bill for that electricity, I'm getting because it's reducing my cost for the, for the water department and the sewer department. So I'm really not.
You're drawing that community solar.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm missing something, because I, I figure if you pay more for something than you would otherwise, that's a cost. I'm not sure.
So, so again, as I said, we're a municipal utility.
Yeah.
And a municipality, it's not like an investor-owned utility. So we're able to have the municipality be the off-taker of this power. So the, the municipality, the water sewer department, you know, the, uh, and some of the municipal buildings are getting a benefit, because they're getting the benefit of the lower cost of the electricity because of the deal that they can cut with the developer.
Okay, so they've got a power purchase agreement, because the developer, that's at a lower rate.
They become the off-taker, they get a little bit, uh, they get a break on their rate, which benefits the water sewer.
So a portion of the power is being allocated to you at, at a lower cost.
Right.
Okay.
So, but it's still costing the electric ratepayers more money. And if, and if we didn't have it going back into the municipality, then if, if we had one or two customers that were the off-takers, they would have the benefit, and the, the ratepayers would be paying for it. Next slide. Um, so this just shows in a slightly different way, uh, what, what was shown earlier about the, the tier-one growth from fifty-five percent to, I think it's sixty-five percent. And then, uh, tier, tier-two and tier-three, one, tier-two starts at one percent and increases annually as well as tier, tier-two and tier-three both increased. And so this is a percent of your annual sales that we all have, all the utilities have to meet, whether it's an IOU, a municipality, or a co-op. Next slide. So, we can't put in solar. We have to either buy REX, or if we can't meet the tier-two or the tier-three, there's an alternate compliance payment that we can pay. And in nineteen, in twenty, in twenty-nineteen, it's now set at sixty-two dollars a megawatt hour. Twenty-twenty beyond, these are just estimates that we've used. And tier-one is ten dollars a megawatt hour. So you figure it's, it's like six-point-two cents a, a kilowatt hour that the customers have to pay. That's an additional payment that's, the customer's going to have to add to the cost of electricity. So over time, you'll probably see more and more rate pressure. If you're not able to put in those resources, you'll have the alternate compliance payment that you're going to meet it one way or the other. You're either going to meet your goal, or you're going to pay. And what, do you want more? Nope, there's not one more.
And when you pay, what is the value of that payment? Where does that value go? It goes to somebody else who was able to put it in?
The Clean Energy Development Fund is the current repository for the ACP payments. To my knowledge, no one has yet had to pay ACP. But it, I, I think Steve's point is spot-on. If you can't meet your targets, and you can typically do that, WEC for twenty-eighteen is bringing in its, uh, tier-three requirements of about three, thirty dollars per MWH, three cents per KWH. So half the relative penalty cost. But if you're geographically challenged.
Yeah, but you can buy REX about that price.
Exactly, so the, and that's because the market has crashed in the REX department. And, uh, so it's a good opportunity to bank them and use them for this. But the penalty is pretty strict, and, uh, and as Steve showed, and, and Rob too, the ramp rate, this is where, we started two years ago, and twenty-thirty-two is the target, so twenty years. And, uh, it's a steep climb, and it's a big number, and it's not going away. And we don't know what the legislature will do with the tiles this year, or next year. Because I think that's the real risk, is, you know, you lock in on something, and then they change it. Just like they've changed the rules of net metering.
And the ACP changes every year.
Right, well, that's just factored by inflation, and, you know, that's, that's, that's a guest of it to begin with.
Well, right.
So Steve, do you find that your, your ratepayers complain because they're paying more? Or they understand that there's that part and parcel trade-off?
That's a, that's a good question. And so far, my ratepayers haven't complained, because we've been fortunate enough that we've been find, we've found efficiencies where, well, this first project just came online, so we're just now starting to get the extra costs. But we try to do everything we can to keep the rate as stable as possible. We have long-term contracts, so that we're not buying on the spot market. I mean, there are a couple of municipal utilities, uh, of, of some members, a number, number of years ago, uh, were, didn't have enough purchases to cover their load in January, when we had that cold snap. And so if you're doing spot market, you look at, um, you can go on to ISO New England's website and look at what the fuel mix is, and in the middle, when they have loads, it's natural gas. And then what happens is in the middle of winter, when you get a cold snap, they, they have, they use that natural gas for heating first. And if you want to buy natural gas to generate electricity, we'll sell it to you, just like putting in renewables, we'll sell it to you. But it's going to probably cost you six or seven times what it would have cost you if it was any other time for that natural gas. And so a couple of utilities found some pretty hefty bills for their power costs. We've been pretty fortunate, we've been pretty well-covered. We always watch the rates, uh, to try to make sure we, we try to keep ourselves positioned, so we're not having rate increases. I've had a number of people say, well, I'll pay more for electric, you know, to be green. And, and that is awesome, that they would be willing to do that. But I have people, my rate, there's a number of my ratepayers who are on fixed income, or who just don't have the money to pay extra. Now, if we had a system where he's, hey, you want to pay extra, and we put it into this fund, and we help to fray the cost, that's fine. But to, to jack the price up on, particularly my ratepayers that can't afford to do it, uh, you know, just, I don't think it's right.
Um, because even though I represent various cities, I live in Woodbury, so my utility is Harduk Electric.
Okay.
And it is extremely high. Uh, my, my electric bills in the winter are well over two-hundred dollars for two people in a household. And it's, it's frustrating. So to hear, you know, how you're figuring out how to balance something, I hope that Harduk jumps on something in the future as well.
Mark, I have a comment. I have a solar system on my house, and I was wondering if I wanted to donate my excess credits so they could be used by Wellington neighbors, um, could, could we do that?
Uh, if it's directed to me, my answer would be yes. What you have to do administratively is convert your existing CPG or registration from what it is, which I assume is a single household, to a group. And you have to pick your group party that you want to tie that difference to, and it has to be served by the same utility. So those are the rules. Yeah, you can amend your CPG.
That's the only way?
Pardon me?
That's really the only way.
Yeah, you can't give it away, because it doesn't have fungible value. No one's going to write you a check. So the only thing you can do in terms of offloading excess, if you overbuild your system, or you don't have your load that follows, balances it, and you have that extra, the, the rule provides that it stays on your account for a year after it's created, and then it goes away. So there is an urgency as you get to that place. I would say, in my experience, we have about five-hundred members that have net metering systems. Probably less than ten have this overcapacity relative to their footprint. And most of them did it deliberately, because they know they're going to add a P, uh, an EV, uh, or switch to heat pumps. Exactly. So if you're not going to change your footprint, and you're going to face this issue, my solution would be amend your CPG, find your off, first, find your off-taker, find the party that fits that profile. Could be a church, it could be a not-for-profit organization served by the same utility. There's many solutions, but you have to get that meeting of minds, and then amend your CPG. And then the utility, we just do this, you know, administratively. We say, this member wants to do this. There are choices as to how, much, and what the, uh, allocation formula is. There's a couple ways to do it, and I can talk to you later if you want. But it's, it's an administrative option, and it will solve that problem. And then you can always revert back if that doesn't work out, you can walk away from, you, there's, there's a method to undo a group if you want.
And one of, one of the issues is it's, it, a lot of additional overhead. I'm not sure how GMP and, and WEC manage it, but I know from the experience of a lot of municipal utilities, it, there's a tremendous amount of overhead to calculate all the values for net metering and give all the credits. It's, it's not easy, and the BEPSA members, the twelve municipal utilities that are members of BEPSA, had sought out a solution, a software solution, and the cost to get the software was, s- I, as I recall, more than a hundred thousand dollars, because people that were going to develop it said, oh my God, it's, and Vermont's net metering laws are so complicated, it, and so they jacked the price up, because it was going to be complicated to write an application to, to calculate all the credits and get all the allocation of credits associated.
Maybe the rule can change.
It can always change.
Yeah, anything can change.
So I think we're a little, um, late, but if anybody has any more questions, then I'm going to answer that. I was thinking that one of the reasons that we had this meeting was to try to figure out how all these things impact preferred sites, which is what the developers want to be on. So you might want to think about, or we might want to think about how we get this kind of input into when the towns are looking for their preferred sites. Because I'm not sure they're taking these kind of factors into account. So, um, how we get the word out, I don't know. But that's going to be part of their town plans and part of our decisions on whether or not we support their, their choices for preferred sites. we support their, their choices for preferred sites.
Yeah, Laura and I were not necessarily on opposite sides of the debate.
We had robust debates.
We had robust debates about a particular solar installation, and folks were asking about, "Well, about alternate sites?" But a lot of the system has single-phase feeders off of it, and you, you need a three-phase feeder to be able to connect these solar sites. And so, I'm with Laura, and that's, you know, and when I was on the Energy Committee for the, when we worked on the draft plan, maybe a year and a half or so ago, it bothered me with some of these sites, because the mapping was saying, "Oh, we got all these spaces, and oh, we can cut down trees." I said, "Wait a minute, wait a minute, we don't wanna cut down trees, because we're trying to capture carbon, and that's what trees do a really good job of, so you're not gonna do that when you have solar panels, because they're not gonna capture carbon." And so, there's, it's a tough nut to crack. And in Vermont, there's a joke, and I don't know if you remember hearing it, but we're the, we're the, supposed to be the Green Mountain State, but I've looked at one of the, what, the forty-megawatt solars project? And some, somebody cracked the joke, like, "We're gonna become the Glass Mountain State." It's like, do we really wanna become that? I'm not sure. Particularly when you're building these big projects, and all that power's going down south.
That's right.
So.
I, I think my input for a preferred site would be the idea of a resilient community, where the power wall and that's the energy storage is, it's at the load, right? It's a small system, it's in your house, your house is a small load, right? So as we get systems that are bigger and bigger, we need to look at our community to see, where are the bigger loads? Where's the supermarket? Where are things like that, right? So, the, the grid naturally evolved, right? It was, you know, it hasn't been around that much longer, and we built lines out, and as the load grew, we put more and more infrastructure. And now we're basically gonna try to flip that switch backwards. So if we just start at the very end of the line, you know, that last customer that got connected way long ago, and try to put a big site in, it's gonna be a challenge. We'll have to construct the grid that way. But if we go to the locations where we already have load, then ideally, the grid is probably already there, right? If we're already serving that load.
Right.
And so, and it also sets up that local load, or maybe in the future to have some batteries, and to be able to, you know, be resilient during storms. So that would be my advice to you. And as far as taking the electrical system needs and overlaying that with all the other forestry needs and everything else in the state, it, it's a multiple-tiered approach. But from the electrical system, just keep the load and the generation close to each other.
Use, use the Shiite problem as, as the warning. You know, you want to locate your generation resources close to your load, the closer you do them. Because then ultimately, you could get to the point where you could create microgrids, because with the new IEEE standard for the, for the inverters, they'll allow ride-through. And so you can actually, we could get to the point where we could create microgrids in communities in small areas. I mean, it wouldn't serve the, the customer that was three miles out, but, you know, you could keep your downtown area running in the event of a, an outage because of a storm, a major storm. So, it's resilient.
Anything else?
I said, I guess, an observation, and maybe it's a question. It, it seems like there's a, that, the, the planning exercise of having towns go through, trying to identify sites, maybe it was like an oversimplification of the complexity of the actual system. And, and that it, it, it may be somewhat unrealistic to expect that there could be identification of like, "Oh, that is a preferred site, that's not a preferred site." Because you'd have to go through, you know, is it near the substation where there is some room on it versus not? And I, and I'm, I'm not sure if, if that's an accurate observation, but I'm not sure if you could comment on that.
I'll take, take a look at that. I think, I think the key is preferred by whom or by what. So in the eyes of the planner, and given the environmental construct from that perspective, there are preferred sites, the granite, the gravel pit.
Gravel pit, right.
Gravel pit. But if it's not near a three-phase line, you're not gonna put a big system in it. So the infrastructure that's there or not, and, and that location, you teased me about being, it's on our, it's on our respective franchise border, and Steve was saying, "It's you." And I said, "No, it's you."
Oh.
So, but the issue, the issue was, it was closer to his three-phase than mine. So that's why he ended up with it.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. But I, I think, in terms of the nuance of, of what is preferred, I think Rob's point's spot on. From the utility's point of view, put the generation where the load is, because the infrastructure's there. That's easy. But it also is a scaling thing. At the end of the line, it's the worst place, even though it's, it's a, you know, beautiful solar site, the right open space, whatever. But at the end of the line, I mean, it could be done, but there's probably a better place to do it. So I don't think there's like a simple answer, but I do think the word "preferred" is in the eyes of the holder, in the eyes of the planner, or the, kind of, whose point of view are you representing with preferred?
And that's for larger stuff. The small stuff like DARA has, lots of small projects that cover your, your load.
Your footprint, that doesn't bother.
That's, that's the best, right?
Right.
And that's what net metering was intended to do.
That was.
But it's been, you know, perverted into becoming a big commercial enterprise.
That's the right verb. I would say, I would say that the other phenomena that I see is, I made this point earlier about the declining price per unit, with the consequence, one consequence of that is, the size that it's being put in is growing. My size, my system in two thousand two was one kilowatt. And I picked that number because I have a tiny footprint, but also because it happened to be an inverter that's rated for one thousand watts, one KW. They don't make those anymore. Everything's moved up, the smallest thing you get now is like three KW. And the, the advan, and, and Rob's point earlier about the IEEE standard changing, and now the advantage is, the utilities have less fear of all this generation dropping off, like he showed in his, his picture, because now the util, the inverters can stay connected longer and ride through a voltage sag, which before, as soon as you hit a certain voltage drop, it's off. So the backside of that problem is-
It exacerbated the problem.
Yeah, you cascade out from what was kind of one problem, you made a multiple of that. So the new inverter technology should be able to solve part of that. So the price point changed, creates a larger capacity sale, and now with battery storage being much more understood and wanted, it's desired, people are buying both the inverter and the battery. And that has this other perverse effect, which is, when we size a load, we only see what we're told. So we see you as a house, a customer, a member, and we have a size for you. But now if you wanna add load, your transformer has to be upsized. So now, more than ever before, the transformer that you originally ended up with is not adequate. If you wanna buy that power wall, the dealer's gonna sell you a bigger engine, bigger amount of PV, because now you've got more stuff to solve, the loads plus backup. So your number's bigger, and the transformer has to be upsized. So it's kind of this cat-chasing-tail thing.
I, I think, from what I hear in your point, being in your shoes, you don't have my software to cruise around the state and see all the different constraints electrically. And I feel you on that. I think from your perspective, even though these maps may be red here and green there, your perspective could be a longer vision of what you want your community to be, right? So even though your map may be red, and there's an issue on the transmission system, maybe there's an issue with the substation, one day maybe we're gonna replace those, you know, do a voltage conversion, and that right goes away. But that community, right, that shopping area, that's really not gonna go away, right? So if we, if we take that sort of preferred site, and, and really extend that vision for many years out, don't really look at today's local constraints, and just-
Right.
-try to get small projects with small loads, like homes and rooftops, and maybe a little bit bigger loads and bigger rooftops, and, and make those the preferred sites. I think that sets you up for the next ten years of where we're gonna go as a, like a entity as we constantly build.
Where you wanna make those investments.
That's right.
So you'll be getting feedback from the communities to inform your investment decisions. I mean, that's the ideal of planning, right? That it would be by direction.
Exactly. Then you're pulling those developers into those areas, and then they're gonna propose projects right there, and then maybe I, I can look at the electrical constraints and say, "Okay, yes, this area is red, but guess what, it's only eighty thousand dollars to fix that." And maybe they've pulled the trigger on it, and maybe they, they'll fix it, and now suddenly it's a green part of the map. So I think from your perspective, it's not so much the electrical problem, it's more what the community wants to see as far as a resilient future, matching the load and generation.
Pretty much anything can be done, it's just costs money. And it's who's willing to pay for it. And sometimes these projects have to pony up when they come in, and they, they wanna be able to generate and sell the electricity, they have to make sure that the system will accommodate that. And if the customers didn't make a change, they wouldn't require a change. But if you wanna come in and do something different, well, you should pay for that.
Like impact fees?
Pretty much, yeah.
So from a utility perspective, have you individually or collectively considered putting together your own preferred sites list? And we often talk to communities and say, "Does that mean this property right here," when you say preferred sites, "or does that mean this set of circumstances together used?" If you were, if that is something you thought utilities could do, I think some communities would look at it and begin to think about those issues. And so you mentioned some factors, load, three-phase, I mean, some of that seems logical, that everyone should think of, but I think when we start, the energy issue is so big in catching up to the education piece and so forth.
Well, we did that, we did that on a small scale, because as a municipal utility, we're the electric company, but we're also the people that live right there in town. And the utility, through me, I recommended a particular site that was open space, it was owned by the municipality. And so, before we went very far with it, I said, "What's, what does the community think?" And we found out that the community did not want it there.
And that's the other part of preferred sites. That when we hear-
Preferred by whom?
Yes, when, what we heard somewhat from the Department of Public Service was to think of preferred sites as where you can get a yes locally. But I think before, does that make sense? Where neighbors, or community members, or municipal, the residents of a municipality for municipal property are desirable, that's a good way to say, "This is a go, this is a green light." But I think you could marry that with some other type of analysis. You know, not every municipal site is a good site. The town garage site, you may not want solar at the town garage, given the trucks and the things that run around. So is every municipal site a good site? If it's got three-phase power, it's close to the load, it's a smaller scale, is it a good site? When you add in the community discussion, it may not be, or the particular, how the, how that property might be viewed in the future. But I see what you guys could create as utilities is guidance on, from the utilities' perspective, these are the kinds of things that would help utilities, ratepayers, whatever it may be, as communities can choose to use it or not. But I think they would listen to something like that.
So we, we've actually done that, and that's what the solar maps are doing. I talked a little bit about different perspectives, right? So when we, when you're looking at a community from a community's perspective, versus the electrical engineer looking at his circuits from that perspective. So our solar map is trying to describe the perspective of the electrical circuits. And I think what you need to do is layer in all these different perspectives, and see where everyone is saying yes at the same time.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, so maybe there's forestry initiatives you have, and other, other things that are going on in the community, and we talked about load, where are the loads, and then maybe you can use the solar map and say, "Okay." And then realize that, you know, sometimes the green turns into red, and we really don't know the real story behind green and red, and there's a lot of nuances with interconnections. So even though it's a red, all these other things are saying yes, right? This is in our downtown community, and everyone seems to be, you know, all these different perspectives are, are giving it a go. So you could still be a go for that site, because there's so many other perspectives that think is the right thing to do.
And from the developer's standpoint, the reason some of these projects are getting larger and larger is there's the economy of scale. And at some point, this project gets so small that they, they're not gonna do it, because they just, the price of electricity is gonna be much higher than what the ratepayers are gonna wanna pay. And so, that's sort of the others, the flip side. So what, as you said, you know, the residential net metering, you know, you put it on your roof, it covers your load, and it's not as much of an impact as putting a five-hundred kilowatt or a megawatt plant in, because you got a lot, a higher power density in one spot, so.
Can I just follow up? So I think you're, you're on the right track, and I think it's absolutely in your wheelhouse, the planning, the toolkit. Again, I'm gonna just flog that report that the department put out last week, that I think at the end of that process, whatever that may come in, those enhancements that are, will I think attempt to give geographic differences to value, that we're now trying to, that now are not making that distinction. The geography matters, and I think that's one more way to determine what is a social, least-cost, slightly acceptable preferable site.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, very good.
So I, I got a question. Would it be possible for us to get point-of-contact information, so that when we're reviewing a project within your territories, that we know who to speak to, so you guys can take a glance at it, and give us a-
Laura knows how to get off of it.
Sense of what the impacts would be, plus or minus on that, and that, and that way we can be more informed when reviewing a project.
Let me invite those that are in WEC territory, I'm glad to entertain it. I'll, I'll give you kind of a, kind of first cut, what the developer looks at, or what the, the hurdles or the steps are. So, under Rule 5.500, which I cited too earlier, or 5.100, the net metering version of the interconnection process, that there, for non, not residential size, anything, let's say arbitrarily greater than fifteen kilowatts. Because fifteen is kind of like today, the max per house with a power wall. So anything over that.
Well, we're looking at commercial stakes.
Commercial, one fifty, five hundred, or greater. Vermont net metering's up to five hundred KW. So anything over that is kind of like standard offer or a development project. There's two items, Fast Track and System Impact Study. Fast Track is a, is a methodology, and Rob is much more fluent than I in this, but it's simply twelve boxes, and you check a box, and you're done. And if you don't check one of them, or maybe it's the reverse, if you do check one of them, you, you fail. And if you fail Fast Track, then you have to go through a full, what's called Impact, System Impact Study. And here's where the utility, in GMP, they do it internally, or you can hire it out. For the co-op, we don't have an engineer on staff, so we basically hire an engineer to do the system impact study. So that's part of the development cost. And through that process, the specific circuits that you're gonna connect to, and what the impacts are, are modeled and determined. And there are certain ratios and things that we don't need to go into, but you are either sustained, the project is sustained by a successful impact study, or it's, it's, it's shown, if you wanna do this, you're gonna have to do all these other compensating measures, and the costs are then borne by the developer. So that's the method by which-
So you have the ability to impose that, or does it-
No, the, the cost causer, you know, takes that, and they pay for that study. And then if they wanna proceed and go through the CPG process, that becomes part of their requirements. The system impact study says you need to do these fourteen things, here's the quote for the fourteen things, go do it.
And that's automatically on the developer, the utility doesn't have to argue that it be placed, the burden be placed on the developer?
I, I don't know if I can give you an absolute answer, John, but yeah, typically, cost causer pays the deal, if you want this to fly, that's what the deal is.
That's correct.
What we're hearing is they don't typically head down that road until they know whether they're a preferred site, because that suggests to them what their return on investment's gonna be. So they're starting with, "Where can I find a site? Okay, town, region, can you call this a preferred site? Now I'll head down a more detailed planning path."
I, I don't disagree with that, I, I would defer to Rob or someone who knows more about it. My reaction is, I know the categories that include the preferred, the, the financial benefit is really point poop, it's nothing. It's a small potato. So the value proposition of finding that site is not a lot more than something else. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I, I think I have a different interpretation of it, so I think the idea is that if they wanna interconnect a net metering project over a certain amount of power, you have to put it in a certain spot in the state. And so we're trying to get it close to the lower and whatnot, and there's brownfields in there, so there's some rules, right? And one of the rules says, if you put it on this preferred site, you can be a net meter project, right? And so, you could, regardless of if we say something's preferred or not, we could, we could put in a two-megawatt site somewhere, but you're not gonna be net metered at that time. So from their pers- So, from their perspective as a business, they need to know what business environment they're in. Are we gonna be in a net metering environment? Or are we gonna be in like this big sort of power purchase environment right away? So, I think they wanna make that decision before they start paying GMP to do these studies. And a lot of the Fast Tracks, because we're so highly penetrated, is just a no on criteria three. I mean, I don't know which one it is right away. It's just kind of, yeah, we had to go through that motion, and then, yeah, you're in it, then they go through the middle study.
What is criteria three?
I said, it relates, uh, it's only ten percent, I think it was ten percent. Is it fifteen percent?
Fifteen, yeah. That, it's the ratio of generation load.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so, if my peak load's a megawatt, and then, so if I'm more than fifteen percent of my DG is fifteen percent of it, then I fail criteria three, right? And then, so, I mean, many of our circuits are going back into the transmission system. So, we're not just fifteen percent, we're, you know, a hundred and ten percent of the load, or, you know, two hundred percent of the load, whatever it is. So, we fail that quite a bit. Yeah, so, I think that's why they're trying to hit you guys first without going through the studies, to see what business environment are the in, is, are, because we wanna be putting in a net metered project.
And even beyond business environment, when they can find a site that's yes, they know they're not gonna get so far into the process, and people are gonna stand up and say, "No, not there." I mean, it's a predictability.
Right, we, we, these studies have timelines too, so I have to finish these studies within thirty days or whatever. So, the process, they may not like all the upgrades that I, like, I find a lot of problems or whatnot. I may say, "Well, you gotta do this and do that," and those are pretty expensive. They may not like the answer, but they're gonna get an answer pretty quick, right? It's not a dragged-out process of, you know, working with people. It's a little bit more ambiguous, you know, so, that may be some of the reasons.
So, again, my question was, could we get a point-of-contact?
Yeah, so, at GMP, we split up our territory. Yeah, you could certainly contact me. I, I responded to the email with, with the PowerPoint slide and our two thousand and nineteen, um, GMP as a snapshot. I don't cover this area specifically. Dan is the engineer for this area. So, uh, feel free to give me an email. I'll put you right back in contact with, uh, either Carly or Michael, right? So, those are our coordinators that see the projects all the way through. And then, the, the local engineer that deals with your substation reconstruction projects that we've recently done in there or whatnot, Stan Bellarino. And he'd be the guy that knows the ins and outs of all the, all the poles and wires on every one of the circuits, so. Yeah, well, it's a big system, we gotta split it up a little bit, you know, so.
And it would be you, Steve, or, or Bill?
For Laura Field.
For WEC, okay.
Steve fits you.
And who do I talk to about buses?
Buses. Oh, Jeff Monder is your guy. He's our tier-three guy in the EIC. Dan, just, just, just hit me with everything, and then I'll, I'll, I'll split and conquer. I, I don't want you to have to chase stuff up, 'cause I'm really excited about those buses too. So, so Jeff is a champion, uh, for, for our innovation center. And, um, there's, there's not just Jeff, but he's, he's one of our focus points. And he's helped a lot of customers through, um, a lot of different scenarios, not just getting off of diesel generators, but a lot of different types of projects.
Okay.
And DEQ has something going on right now, like, they're, I don't know.
Yes.
And it's involved in that.
I mean, DEC?
Is that what I meant?
That's what she meant.
I, I don't know, DEQ in Mass, DEC in Vermont.
California. So, I guess we're looking for an adjournment motion for first, the regional planning committee?
I'll make the motion.
Do you?
I'll. The planning committee will make a motion.
Okay, can you make a second?
Okay.
Yes, uh, Project Review Committee. Bob, can I give a second?
Yep.
Thank you. Lovely, thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.